Our last budget meeting to order. Thank you for all for coming. Just a few general comments. We got a pretty full schedule today, so I'd ask that any comments from the council be kindly directed directly at the budget. If we have other comments outside of that, let's do those offline. Want to thank everyone for coming. I try to keep these as informal as we can. When my mother gave birth to me, she named me Rod, not President. So please don't address me as that. My name's Rod. And Daniel, you don't have to ask to talk. Let's just keep it casual. I think that's a better environment than trying to keep it really formal. The last thing, Council, you can see if we cut the police budget department today, we're going to all get arrested and spend the night in jail. So Don, you did a good job. You could actually sit down now and we'll just approve everything on the budget. So Don, the floor is yours.
I've got power, Jim. Okay. Hey, thank you, City Council. And hey, before I get going, I just have to do a shout out to the group in the room. You know, every, every single day I get these shift summaries and I get to see the work that the folks in this room are doing. And it goes all the way down from our police officers to our evidence staff, to our records folks, just doing amazing things. And it strikes me regularly, daily, sometimes multiple times a day, the amazing things they do. So just feel really lucky that we have good people that want to step up and do this challenging work. And I also feel pretty lucky that I get to be a part of this team. So just got to put that out there. And also, real briefly, Amanda and Scott, if you could raise your hand, they helped a lot with this presentation, wrangling all the data and whatnot. And Dr. Dave Kinzer, he also put a lot of work into this too. So he, you know, just real quick, before we dive into the budget proposal, just thought it would be helpful to give a little bit of a historical perspective because I think it gives some context as to where we're at today, but also provide some perspective as to where we want to go. As many of you will remember, 2020, 2021, very difficult timeframes in our country. We also saw some of the effects of that here in Rapid City, particularly your law enforcement. Couple trends nationwide hit us here in our community, and we're still recovering from some of that. Nationwide, we saw a huge uptick in violence. We saw that here in Rapid City, and it caused us to change a lot of the way we did business. It caused us to reevaluate how we were doing things. Essentially, we had to take our resources and put them 24/7 in certain locations, particularly in one neighborhood in our north side. We'd never had to do it to that extent before. And it also really challenged us to step up in our, in our community engagement efforts. Really working with the people living in the neighborhood, the community leaders, working with them to create neighborhood watches, meeting with the good folks to build trust so that they felt comfortable giving us a call when they needed to. And the third piece of that, we came together as a city. Some of the folks right here at the DAS helped us out withholding the owners of these properties accountable for unsafe living conditions. It was a team effort. The other trend that we saw that impacted us here in Rapid City, we're still working on this, is officers leaving the profession. Happened nationwide. Many agencies across the country are still dealing with this. Just this week, I saw three different articles of police departments, large departments, trying to figure out how to solve their hiring crisis and retention crisis. At one point, a couple of years ago, we were trying to hire 35 police officers. That's a big number for us. I'm proud to say, as of today, we're only trying to hire one. And I wish I could take all the credit for that, but I can't. There's a lot of folks in this room that are responsible for all the work that went on to make that happen. And because of this trend that we're bucking by bringing in good folks to do this work, we have people from all over the country reaching out to us to say, how are you doing this? How, we're putting little Rapid City on the map by the work that we're doing here. And Assistant Chief Sitz has done a lot of research in this area, and he's going to spend just a couple of minutes on this topic here coming up. Okay, so that kind of brings us to where we are today, 2025. This has been a really active year already, as you're probably aware. Earlier in the year, about February, we were pretty proud to announce that we had witnessed a steady decrease over the, since 2020 of violent crime. And that includes a decrease in aggravated assault, arson, burglary, homicide, and robbery. Kind of have a graphic up there showing that. However, despite our violence being down, we still found the need to have our proactive policing efforts in our north side neighborhood. And additionally, now in some of our south side neighborhoods, like Star Village. So we're not, we're not able to keep our foot off the gas in certain neighborhoods. We still have to keep working through our traditional police work. But in tandem with that, we still have to keep working on building the relationships that we, that we have strong in our north side neighborhoods. And now we're extending that to the south side in Star Village. And Jamie Kirsch has been doing a lot of work. She's here in the crowd, her and her team, working with Journey On and others, many of our service providers. They're going to be in Star Village this weekend, helping folks get fire alarm, fire detectors in their homes. They have other different service providers up there this weekend. They'll be up there. And I want to extend an invite on Tuesday, if you're open and available. It Takes a Village is happening again on Tuesday. It's from 3:30 to 6:30. It's kind of a, it's a fun, family-friendly event, sort of a block party type of thing. It's, it's, you're not going to show up and get yelled at. They'll be happy to see you there. Typically, there's 100 to 200 people there. And that's what community engagement looks like, us trying to pull together the folks that care and want to make things better and move forward. So if you're able to make it, that'd be, that'd be great. Further, one more thing I got to mention about this year. As you'll remember, in the spring, we had a homicide in our downtown core. We, as a community, police included, decided that was unacceptable. And here's another area where we shifted our resources. You probably noticed it. Essentially, we've been, we've went back to old school 1920s Foot Patrol in the downtown core. And we've got a lot of positive feedback about that. But I also have to mention, it does, it's a draw on our resources. So we're spreading ourself thin in a lot of different hotspot areas in our city. And I'll talk a little bit more about the couple items here shortly. Real briefly, while violence is down, I still have to point out the chart on the upper left, our calls for service. If we go, if this continues as projected in 2025, we're on record to hit a record high number. Much like the fire department, with our calls for service, we count them as one regardless of one or 10 people show up. It's still one call for service. And you'll also notice our arrests have increased as well as our citations. Our citations, our traffic citations are up due to the work of focused traffic enforcement that we've had over the last year and a half or so. And because we're closer to fully staffed, we have more ability to be proactive. Okay, real, real quick, I'll just touch on this. Who are we? What makes up the Rapid City Police Department? Before I dive into that, I just got to acknowledge that overall, we share a lot of community support. We feel that daily. But along with that support, there's the expectation of transparency. We work very hard to explain what we're doing and why. And also ensuring that we're operating at the highest level possible. Our patrol division, it's our biggest division, 103 employees there. The bulk of those employees are patrol officers. We have four different shifts, and they're running 24/7, 365, around the clock. Three of the shifts overlap during the busiest timeframe so that we have the best coverage for our community. Also includes our quality of life unit, our community outreach, street crimes A and B. A is sort of geared towards the downtown daytime type of issues that we run into. B is more of the nighttime proactive hotspot policing. Also includes our canine and community service officers. Next, we have our criminal investigations division. That includes our detectives, our evidence section, our compliance officers. Our detectives are, work on various different crimes, people crimes, financial. It also includes our joint task forces that we're a part of. For example, our drug unit, our internet crimes against children, both made up of the police department, sheriff's office, and Division of Criminal Investigation for the state. And that collaboration is very important because we're getting more done. Force multiplier for us. Then support services, that's kind of everybody else that helps the machine keep rolling. Special Ops includes, it's sort of the, it's a couple people, high-level people there that are making sure we have our events covered. All the, all the parades, all the, you know, we've had multiple peaceful protests throughout this year, making sure we have folks there that are keeping things safe. Our training division, which also includes the 20 folks we currently have in training, that's quite a large number. Also, all of our records management, our hiring, our accreditation, all the information we put out to the public. Our safety specialists are under support services, as well as our crime reduction folks that help us monitor our data to make sure that we're working on our hotspots appropriately. So I'll spend a little time here on our budget numbers. Essentially, we took all the line items that we really don't have a lot of control over and put them on this slide. These are the numbers that are set in advance by finance. We're either given a number or a formula, and we simply enter these items in. So not a whole lot of control on our part with these. These are the line items where we didn't make any change this year. Essentially, we evaluated how much was spent last year and this year, and then recognized we were very close to our allocations last year and this year. And essentially, we didn't anticipate any major changes in '26. So we just left these exactly the same. Some of our more major increases and decreases, salary and wages, one of our biggest line items, you'll notice it did go up, currently anyway. And salary and wages, some of that's pretty much locked in due to the contracts that we work through with our union. But also, this increase does include our ask for some additional FTEs, which we'll talk about here more in detail. Your departmental charges, I do believe the finance director has spent quite a bit of time on this over the last week. And I'll defer that to him if he wants to dive into that, or if you have questions on that. Professional services, this is a line item we felt we could reduce. Essentially, this includes the instructors that we hire to bring in to train our folks. Anytime we have to tow a vehicle. Building and vehicle insurance, our department psychologists that we share with the fire department and sheriff's office. And marketing for open positions, we took a look at that one, realized it was probably a bit high this year, so that was one we cut back. And repair roll stock, essentially vehicle repairs is this line item. We worked with finance and believe we'll be able to save costs here through shared fleet maintenance that we've been working on. And just real quick, I have to give a shout out to the folks over at the city shop. They do an awesome job. Jeff Wilson and his folks, can't say enough good things about them. Our, our folks that shuttle our cars around are just really impressed and got to give those guys an attaboy. Okay, so how are we being efficient and effective? You know, this is something we're very mindful for the taxpayers, and I know the council, this is a concern for you as well. Wanted to highlight how we're walking our talk. First, I just got to spend one minute on this. I promise I'll be fast. But we have a unique and special relationship with the sheriff's office. Decades ago, Tom Hennies and Don Holloway, they were line-level patrolmen and a deputy, and they witnessed back in the 80s this dysfunction and duplication of services and our agencies not working together. And they just kind of decided that if they ever got in a position to make a change, they were going to, they were going to do that. They were going to, we were going to collaborate. And sure enough, one became the chief, one became the sheriff, and they worked to knit our agencies together. And instead of us working on the same projects but not talking to each other, now we just simply work together. And what that equates to is a force multiplier for law enforcement, but also a savings to the taxpayers. And this might seem very common to us because it's all we know in our community, but this, this doesn't happen everywhere. This is, this is special. When I talk about this in other places in the country, they look at me very funny because there's usually some headbutting that occurs, and that doesn't happen here. These relationships, the sheriff and I extend this to our other partners with the Highway Patrol and DCI. And that's evidenced by the joint task forces that we have in place. One thing briefly I'll mention is our strong relationship with the fire department. I would say it's, it's the best it's ever been. Chief Culberson and I worked very hard on this. And one example of that would be the relationship we have between our quality of life unit, our street crimes A folks, and mobile medic. That working relationship is a model that folks from across the country regularly ask us to come talk about, how we're working together to serve those in need. Journey On, very unique, something that isn't seen across the country as well. Thanks to the leadership of Mr. Lehman there and also Dr. Tamang, Journey On has been a solid partner for us for years. Last year, they handled over 6,000 calls for service. Those are calls that would have normally, most likely, went to a police officer to handle. And as a result, it freed us up so that we could go handle things that only an officer could do. So it's a big number. It's worth highlighting. We are still the only accredited law enforcement agency in the state of South Dakota. It's a big deal. We've been accredited for over 30 years. And what that means is we have to open up our policy to a third party. Policy practices, procedures, everything we do to a third party, they go through it with a fine-tooth comb. It's kind of uncomfortable sometimes, but what that does is it ensures we're compliant with the most professional practices in the field. And we believe that equates to efficiencies to the, the folks that we serve. And lastly, you probably noticed as the cities continue to grow, we've started to expand our footprint by decentralizing some. And that, that's allowed us for not only quicker response times, but to continue our partnerships in hotspot areas, particularly the North Precinct. Large purchases. You know, typically, when we have a large purchase, I try really hard to communicate with you in advance. You know, this year, we're aware that we have some aging patrol vehicles. I know the process is changing with the CIP fund. And I just, I, I give this as an example of a possible challenge because I know I'm not the only director that might need some larger equipment needs. And, you know, our vehicles live a rough life in South Dakota. And we, we don't beat on them, but we, we treat them, they're hot-seated. I mean, it's pretty common for one officer to get off shift and hand the keys to somebody else, and that car's right back on the road for another shift. So by the time they hit 120,000 miles, you get in that car and it feels like it's got 300-plus thousand miles. They're, they're in tough shape. And really important for us to have safe vehicles. At times, we have to respond places quickly. So once they start hitting that 120 mileage, we start looking hard at them. And we've experimented with trying to keep them going longer than 120,000 miles, but what we find is we get nickelled and dimed with all the things that start going wrong with them. It, it becomes more of a liability than, than an asset. All right, I just want to touch on this briefly, so you have awareness of what grants we currently have going. The JAG grant, that's the top one. It's something we apply for annually. I regularly bring these before the council. Typically, we work with the sheriff's office on this, and typically, it's for equipment. Most recently, we bought equipment for the, our internet crimes against children unit for software and digital evidence storage. And likely, we'll have some other equipment need next year that we'll reach out to the grant for. CVIPI, this Community Violence Intervention, we're on this grant through the end of '26. It's currently covering two wages for our community engagement and helps with some of the funding for Journey On and the children's home with the work that they're doing with high-risk youth, helping to get them connected with programming. Big piece of why you see some of this community engagement occurring in our community. Project Safe Neighborhood, that's a focused unit where we have a detective specifically working on gun violence. Any sort of crime, felony crime involving violence, involving a firearm, he's taking that case and working with our federal partners to make sure they're being held accountable. The VOCA grant, that's something we're able to apply for and renew annually. Covers the wages for our high-risk, high-risk youth coordinator, which helps support youth outreach that we're doing. And helps get families and youth connected with services to hopefully get them in a good place. So 2026 grant opportunities. This is what we are looking at to try to add to the department. So the COPS grant is a grant that we've applied for, for many years. We're familiar with it. We've reached out to them multiple times throughout my career. And essentially, we're looking for help in funding 10 positions for three years. And after those three years are over, then it would fall to the city to cover the, the rest of the funding for the, moving forward. The funding for the three years, the feds would cover close to half of the wages and salary. And this grant is not a guarantee. We, we're in the process of applying. If we don't get the grant, you know, we would come back to the city and try to look at what Plan B might look like, working with the council, the mayor, the finance director. If we were to be awarded the grant, we would bring this back before the council in the October timeframe for you to approve or disapprove, or whatever that would look like. So we're kind of in the application process there right now. The Highway Safety Grant, it's another grant that we are on. We're looking to extend that. We currently have two traffic officers on our Highway Safety Grant. We can renew for this annually. We're looking to add two more traffic officers focused on DUI enforcement. It's another grant that we're very familiar with. I actually brought this before the council in April, this, this particular grant, and this group approved us to move forward for application. Essentially, they, they cover the officer's salaries for a year, and there's not a funding match for us, but there is a in-kind match, meaning we keep track of the work that our other officers are doing towards traffic safety and apply that towards the grant. So it's not so much a funding match, it's a work credit requirement that we have to do to make up for the balance. Okay, so why apply for these grants? Why am I bothering you with this, right? So I just want to spend a minute talking about our workload. There's a couple metrics that law enforcement use to figure out where they are at regarding the data, call for service, and population. One of those is officers per population. And the national average that agencies strive for is to have about 2.2 officers per 1,000 people. And we are not at 2.2. We are at 1.8 currently. However, this is no longer the gold standard that agencies use. What has, what has become the shift, and it's recognized by the ICMA, International City County Management Association, is the metric of calls for service per officer per year. And the metric you want to be at is about 1,000. The goal is to be around 1,000 calls for service per officer per year. And the reasoning behind this is that number provides a good balance between response to calls for service and discretionary time. So time to address proactive actions like traffic stops, subject stops, walk-throughs, bike patrols, foot patrols downtown, and even quality of life things like abandoned vehicles. Currently, where we're at right now, we're not at 1,000. We are currently at about 2,100. So what that means, the gold standard is 1,000, calls for service per officer per year. We're at 2,100. Calls for service per officer per year, over double. Okay? And once these 20 officers that I mentioned come out of training, that's a big number. And we feel, working the data, that that's going to bring us down into the 1,400 range. So we're closer to that 1,000. These folks won't be off of training completely till... Probably another nine months. We'll have most of those folks out of training. So we believe we will be in that 1,400 call range. But an additional 12 will get us into that 1,100, 1,200 range, right next to the 1,000 calls for service range. And that's, that's right where we want to be. And I have to mention, though, that's using the data we have right now. That's not accounting for additional city growth, additional population growth, additional call for service load. That's just getting us caught up to where we are right in this moment. That, it could change. But I do think it's important for us to monitor this. It's important for us to keep track of it and to keep you informed with where we're at. And that's data that we'll continue to track and share with you all as we move forward. So Assistant Chief Sitz has a couple slides here.
Thanks, Chief. So when we talk about effectiveness and efficiency within an organization, I feel we have to have attrition and retention has to be in that conversation someplace. Hiring, as you can tell from up there, hiring a police officer is not cheap. And it's not a position we can hire for today and expect an employee to be working independently in, in one or two weeks. Generally, when we hire someone, they're going to go through four weeks of a pre-service. We're going to ship them off to the academy for another 13 weeks. They're going to come back for another four weeks to get ready for a PTO program. And then they're going to go to...
And, um, that's data that we'll continue to track and share with you all as we move forward. So, uh, Assistant Chief Sitz has a couple of slides here.
Thanks, Chief. So when we talk about effectiveness and efficiency within an organization, uh, I feel we have to have attrition and retention has to be in that conversation someplace. Hiring, as you can tell from up there, hiring a police officer is, is not cheap. And it's not a position we can hire for today and expect an employee to be working independently in, in one or two weeks. Generally, when we hire someone, they're going to go through four weeks of a pre-service. Uh, we're going to ship them off to the academy for another thirteen weeks. They're going to come back for another four weeks to get ready for PTO program. And then they're going to go to into an eighteen-week PTO program. Uh, it's not uncommon to get extended during that PTO program. So for about twenty-six weeks there, uh, we're paying, you know, two officers to, to train one officer. So we're paying two and getting, getting the productivity of one, uh, which is a, a much slower, slower rate. And based on studies and, and based on how long it takes someone to get trained up, um, they say the average attrition costs for a law, law enforcement agency are double or triple that of, of another organization. So from here, uh, just looking at it, eleven officers, it's going to cost anywhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars just to get them trained up and working independently. When we factor in the, the PTOs training them, those costs bump to one point three to one point eight million dollars, which, uh, with a mean of about one point five. And that's not factoring in the cost of the written test, the interview panels on the weekends, uh, the background investigations that are about two thousand dollars apiece, uh, the medical exams, the psychological exams. Uh, I'm not counting all of that in there. So as you can see that, um, attrition costs a lot. So it's, it's really wise for the city to, to invest in our employees and, and look for retention, which is what we've done. If you look here, um, you know, like the chief had mentioned, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two were, were rough years for, for law enforcement across the nation. Uh, the Rapid City Police Department, uh, also saw a pretty good exit. You know, and I used eleven in the previous slide for a reason. Uh, in those years, we averaged, uh, twenty officers, we'd, we're leaving the Rapid City Police Department. Uh, since we've introduced our, our wellness and retention package, uh, we're down to nine, uh, eleven officers. So just saving on that attrition alone, we're expected to save the city nearly a, a million dollars a year on that. And a quick fun fact is, you know, again, we have one FTE opening and we are not running, uh, hiring for a November class this year. Uh, which we, each hiring cycle, uh, depending on how many applicants we get, probably costs, uh, the city roughly between forty and fifty thousand dollars for us to run a hiring cycle. We're not running one this year. And I couldn't tell you the last time we didn't have a, a November cycle. So, uh, we're heading in the right direction. Uh, this couldn't have been done without the council's, council's support, uh, in implementing this, this project. You know, back in, in twenty twenty, what we saw was a lot of departments were investing heavily on the front end, uh, offering, I saw thirty to fifty thousand dollar sign, signing bonuses. I saw offering moving expenses. We're going to pay your rent for the first year until you can find a house. And we just realized that wasn't for us. We can't invest on people that haven't, don't have a history with us, that haven't served our community. And we thought the right path would be to invest in our current employees. So while the savings, uh, through attrition are great, it's a great win for, for our, our city. It's a great win for the police department. It's a good win for public safety. Um, I like to also look at that, this as on the human element side. As you know, law enforcement's a difficult job. We don't have people calling us up, uh, to celebrate wins. We don't get any phone calls to, it's my birthday. I got a job promotion, right? It's a, we go to crisis twenty-four seven. Uh, there's probably not an officer in this room or in the PD that hasn't been to multiple critical incident, incidents, been hit, kicked, spit on. Um, and all that takes a toll. So when we look at that, um, did you know that the life expectancy in law enforcement is twenty-two years less than that of the general population? Uh, twenty-five percent of officers have high blood pressure, forty percent are obese. Depression is twice as high for police officers as it is the general population. And suicide is forty-five percent higher, yeah, in law enforcement is the general population. Not a great recruitment ad. Um, and the FOP National Officer Survey kind of, kind of echoes that. You know, seventy percent of officers are considering leaving law enforcement, fifty percent experiencing high burnout and eighty percent are experiencing exhaustion. But again, you know, our, our focus, uh, on our staff, supportive of our staff, city leadership, supportive of our staff, it, it means a lot. Uh, we recognize it. And again, those attrition numbers, they couldn't have been done with, with, without you. Uh, there would be, I'm not aware of any law enforcement agency right now, medium-sized or larger, we're considered a medium-sized organization, that is only one employee down. And we have two people in our hiring process right now. So, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that one will go to zero. Um, I don't think there's any, too many organizations out there that wouldn't jump at a five percent, uh, attrition rate and a ninety-two percent increase in hiring. So, uh, what we're doing, uh, we're doing it right. And, you know, I think, I, I take it as a, when we talk about ethics in law enforcement and especially ethics for, for leadership in law enforcement, um, I take that as a responsibility to take care of those that are taking care of us. And then this last slide, this is our organi, our org chart. Uh, you might notice it might be a little bit different than a traditional org chart. Uh, what we've done is we have flipped it and we flipped it for a reason. Uh, it's to, to serve as a daily reminder to supervisors and command staff that our staff is not there to support us, but we are there to support them in achieving our vision, mission and goals.
Okay. We will hang for questions and, um, you know, if there's something we don't get answered today and you're thinking about it later, um, obviously you can get ahold of any of us at any time or whatever the case might be. I know you guys have a lot to work on and a lot of decisions to make.
Thank you, Don. Um, and I forget the other officer's name.
Uh, Assistant Chief Sitz here.
Assistant Chief Sitz for your presentation.
Informal, Scott.
You know, thank you, guys. Do we have any questions, comments for the, uh, police department? Uh, Bill.
I just want to reiterate, and I think, uh, it would be echoed by other members of the council that for the most part, we are really, really proud of our police department, also the fire department, the sheriff's department. I think you guys all do a really good job. I've had nothing but positive interaction with them over the forty years I taught and now the last six, seven years since I've been retired. And to see the inner workings from being in the council, visiting dispatch, you know, doing these things and seeing how it works. I, I just have nothing but kudos for you guys and what a good job you do. I'm particularly impressed with the way our officers seemingly have an endless supply of patience when dealing with extraordinarily difficult people. And, um, I've never seen anybody lose it. I'm sure it has happened from time to time and you've dealt with that. But for the most part, it shows that they are trained well and of high quality, uh, as individuals. And so I have nothing but good to say about this. I think you guys are lucky in one respect that whenever you work for the government, you're doing missionary work of some kind. At least, I think nationwide and certainly in this part of the country, the police department has the support of the citizens. So, um, you can count that as a blessing. And I know it doesn't really cut down on the amount of, uh, problems that people face personally and internalize and everything. But nonetheless, you can feel that people are behind you for the most part. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks for your work.
Greg.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Bill said. Um. Yeah, you guys rock. I mean. I think this is a very difficult place to be a law enforcement officer. And I witness you guys dealing with the public, um, and the patience and the professionalism is, is remarkable. You know, and, and these foot patrols, I think that you're doing those are highly effective. And it, the downtown businesses, um, they are, they are, I think, very pleased with this. And I appreciate the effort that you've made and responding to a problem or an issue that they've, um, brought to your attention. And, and I think that, uh, all that you do is, is why we are, as Bill said, so proud of our police department. And, um, I think that, um, if you need anything from the council, you should never hesitate, uh, to come to us. Thank you.
Kevin, your comments?
Yeah, I'll be short. I just want to say thank you. Um, the downtown patrol is amazing. The quality of life unit is amazing and it's just, uh, makes you proud of Rapid City. So. And I just love it when I see the, one of the officers downtown chatting with the tourists. So, thank you.
Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, I think just a comment from the presentation, I appreciate how you are trying to lessen the af, average call per officer. But I also just want to recognize that I think you're also trying to, in parallel, reduce calls for service in general with some of your outreach programs. So, uh, not to speak on behalf of everyone else, but I think that's a area that I'm extremely interested in. So thank you for, for working on both at the same time.
Lindsey.
Thank you, Chair. It's a slight delay in the microphone, so I've gotten on up over the last five days. I just wanted to say thank you to Jamie and your team for the outreach efforts in Star Village. I know that's been really meaningful and impactful in that particular neighborhood, um, and the continued work that's happening, um, for the residents that live up there. Um, and thank you to our officers and people that go out every day and, um, do the work. Um, it's incredibly challenging and, and certainly not meant, uh, for everybody. And so, uh, we're very grateful for that. I guess I did have one question for you, uh, Chief. If, um, are you missing anything in your budget that you feel that is needed to support your, your team right now? Um, I know we have some, we have the officers in there. Um, there's, it seems to be a lot of support for additional. I know we, the downtown efforts, I was just meeting with a downtown constituent today and, um, very much appreciated. Just having that presence in the downtown community is really, really meaningful, um, even if it's just to perceive safety. Um, it's been very impactful.
No, I, I really appreciate the opportunity there. Thank you for the question. Um, I, I feel pretty lucky, uh, just the support that we've had over the years from our city leadership. Um, a lot of the things that we're doing, a lot of the progress that we're making, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in this position if it wasn't for leadership allowing this to happen. And we've kind of laid out our asks for, uh, the council, um, when it comes to vehicles and, uh, just enough folks to make sure that we can keep these, uh, high priority things going and moving forward. Um, just felt like it was our job to bring you the facts, bring you the information and then, of course, uh, you make the decisions on that. So I, I appreciate the opportunity though.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do.
A few comments from me. Uh, I appreciate, Don, you've been one of the few department directors. When you have things on the agenda, you get it out before us ahead of time. We have time to process that. Another director, Patrick Dame at the airport, when I was on that board, he gave us plenty of lead time. That's important. We get so many things at the last minute and we have to make quick decisions. So I appreciate your efforts there. And I'm also impressed with your org chart. That should be an example for City Hall. It really should. I think the way you have it set up is very well and, and is a great tribute to you and your department. Uh, if no other questions, thank you, folks. And, uh, I think Civic Center is up next. The Rushmore Plastics Civic Center is up next.
In light of the informal meeting, I brought my rum and coke. Don't, don't tell the cops. I drove. I drove. Don't tell the cops.
Is there an inter-departmental charge for that?
I want to thank, uh, uh, council for having, uh, these presentations this year. We don't often get to speak in front of the full council. Uh, it's really nice to touch base with you on this level. And, um, but I do want you to know, uh, each and every one of you, um, if there's something you want to follow up with us uh, or you're hearing stuff from your constituents and you want to get down to the bottom of it, please contact us. Uh, Tracy and I are both available for you anytime you want. And, uh, we, we want to make sure that we're, have a good connection with you guys. Um, all right. For a quick, uh, uh, presentation breakdown, um, I brought Tracy Heitch with me this time. There's a reason for that. Uh, we've reorged ourselves over at the monument. Um, we've had to, and you'll hear various reasons why. But one of the reasons why Jane Kramer left us last November, she retired. Jane Kramer, if you didn't know, was a big player at the monument. We used to have two deputy directors and now we have one deputy director. Um, what we've decided, that we reorged it, instead of each one of us handling a different department, that we're going to treat Tracy like a real deputy director, um, uh, we're soon moving her out of her other roles and, uh, giving her, uh, all the hats of a deputy director. That means she does everything with me. I have a background in operating venues, you all know that. Tracy has an extensive background in financial planning and financial management. And so together we make a really good team and we work together, two minds, two sets of eyes. That's what we're doing. So the first thing I want to do, and you all know this, but I want to remind everybody that we're an enterprise fund. Um, we do not operate according to the general fund. We don't have any direct connection to the general fund. I know you guys all know that, but I think it's important to make that distinction because at times, we're still a city department. And at times it gets a little bit muddy. Uh, the city might be struggling because sales tax in a quarter wasn't doing so well. And I might be having the best quarter of my life. And then people are asking me, why are you going forward with that project? Why are you going forward with hiring that staff member? Um, because our budget has its own personality separate from the general fund. But that doesn't mean we are not, um, governmentally supplemented. We are. The BB and B is, uh, the bed, board and booze tax is part of our supplement. Um, and it's a major part, that all the BB and B comes to us and then we deliver to the, uh, Visit Rapid City, their portion of the BB and B. The portion that's left with us represents thirty percent of our revenue. That's not chump change. Civic Center and other venues around the country cannot operate without a supplement program. And I can't think of a better program than the BBAB. The BB and B is a program, the bed, board and booze tax, hotels, restaurants and bars, that we, we help with. Our food and beverage department is probably one of the largest contributors to B and B and B from the food area. And also, uh, we book a lot of events that create economic impact and fills hotel rooms and creates all kinds of spending in town. So I can't think of a better supplement funding mechanism for, for, uh, a business, uh, business like ours than that, the BB and B. Very important to us. Seventy percent of our budget though, is left of our revenue. Where are we getting that? That is business we have to drive because we've got to drive seventy percent of our own business. We have to think like a business. Um, so we do things sometimes a little differently over there, um, working with, um, working with our folks and our teams. But it, uh, we often think more like a business, uh, for that seventy percent. Our board is our governing, uh, man, uh, governing body. There's five people on our board. It's a pretty small board, um, but they're a very active board. Uh, they're involved in just about everything we do. If you are a new member on our board, you're going to get a crash course, uh, in the first couple of months you're there, on our budgets, how we operate, our future, our planning, our capital, all that. So you're caught up and immediately our board is, uh, activated. They are involved in, uh, um, our, our budget of course, and our budget planning, all of our strategies, our, uh, staff positions, our risks taking and any adaptations throughout the budget year that we need to make. They're also involved in our capital spending and our capital plans. Um, we have, uh, Councilman, uh, Strowman sits on our board as liaison from council. And I think he would attest on how active and involved our board is. The main thing I wanted to get across to you before I turned part of the presentation over to Tracy is, uh, where we're at, uh, right now. To understand our twenty twenty-six budget, I think, uh, you need to understand that we're in a tremendous growth period. Um, and we have been ever since we built the Summit Arena. Um, that growth in revenue represents more than a million dollars a year since we built the Summit Arena. And we are projecting the same thing going into twenty twenty-six. We know that growth won't last forever, but we have, uh, really good reasons, some things we'll get into today, uh, of why we expect that growth to continue into next year. I can tell you, you can ask any venue like ours around the country, a million dollars a year for several years in a row is unheard of. That's a tremendous growth. It has a lot to do with the Summit Arena, um, but it's not all Summit Arena events that contributed that growth. By putting the Summit Arena there, it put us on the map larger in the country, which. By putting the Summit Arena there, it put us on the map larger in the country, which shone a light on our other venues. We are doing more conventions, we are doing more theater events, we are doing more of certainly sports tournaments, we're doing more of everything. And that is important, and some of those events are important to economic impact. Also, in growth, I wanted to inform the board, and this is the struggles that we have, this is a hurdle that we have, our calendar is full. When I say that our calendar is full, I mean for the touring season, the business season of indoor events. The business season of indoor events is traditionally, and for decades, Ben, October, November, February, March, and April. That's indoor event business time. We probably, I don't even know how much, we probably drive most of our revenues during those those five months. We are typically slower in the summer. Got many events this summer, more than last year, but our summers slow down quite a bit. So if we're going to grow, we've got to grow into the summer. That means looking at more non-traditional events. But this is good as well. When I say non-traditional events, they're typically not always the ticket-buying public event. I'm talking about conventions and conferences and things like that. As part of our growth, we added a position just this past year that added, that is a business development manager. That role is going after specifically events that we can book in more of our slower season. They're going after conventions, maybe some additional sports tournaments that need to be indoors in the summer, but we're going after that. We know we have some growth there, we know it can happen. We already see, that person's only been in that position for a few months, we've already seen some additional ads for this summer, some additional ads for next year, but typically when you're talking about conventions and conferences, you're talking about two years out from booking. So here's what I got to say, a fun fact. In 2027, in June, we got a convention every week. That's never happened. June is typically one of our slower months. We're lucky on a very odd year that we would get one convention in the month of June, and we've got one in every every week of June of 2027. So that's what we're we're working on. That position will work with Visit Rapid City, not against them, working together to go after more conventions, work with our sports authority, going after more large audience participation type of tournaments. So we're very excited about that addition to our group. Also, in growth, I can tell you that we've had to grow with the, since we added the summit and all the extra business we're getting, we've had to grow every department over the last three, four years. The only department that didn't grow is our finance department, and that is something we're working out with HR right now. We had it in our budget from our board to add an additional position in our finance department this year, and in 2026, you'll see we're adding another FTE in there next year, so we'll get eventually two new people in that department. But what was happening with all the event traffic and all the event auditing and vent finances that you have to do and all that, it added so much to their plate, they were falling behind on their daily reporting and their regular reporting, which is also very important. So we needed to fill in there. We thought we could get away with not doing the finance department, ended up having to add into our finance department. But it's all because of this tremendous growth. All that revenue coming in, our expenses have fallen right with it. In order to do multiple events at the same time, we couldn't rely off that one piece of equipment that we'd move from one venue to the other, because now we need it in two two venues at the same time. A lot of new equipment, a lot of new planning that way, and a lot of new staff in almost every department. So with that, I'm going to let Tracy dig into a few of the numbers with you, and then I'll come back, and then we'll get ready for questions.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and chat a little bit today. So first, I want to just thank our Board of Directors and our entire team. For us, the budgeting process is kind of a year-round process. Our board works diligently with us, and we approved this budget back in June. Would I say year-round? Every single month, we are constantly taking a look at where we are compared to our budget. And one of the things that's really important for us is if we see our revenues are not tracking with where we expected them to be, then we're addressing expenses and figuring out how we can eliminate expenses. So those are constant adjustments that we are making throughout the year. I'm proud to say that our team of 60 full-time employees at the Monument has over 350 years of experience in that building. So that's pretty neat. We've got a lot of long-term employees in our building, and that's what allows us to operate at peak levels. I do want to note, before I get too much into the budget, that the numbers that you have in front of you include the energy plant budget. The energy plant operation kind of falls under our purview, but this is the first time their budget has been combined with ours. So what I'm going to be addressing today is the 19.1 million dollar budget that is the Monument. The 2% or 3% that is left over compiles the energy plant budget. So when we looked at our budget for 2026, we had a couple of major goals. We wanted to make sure, like Craig mentioned, growth, that we had very targeted and controlled growth in our revenues. And on the expense side, we wanted to make sure that we are focusing a lot on efficiencies and controlling those expenses. Events, that's what we do, that's our business. Our calendar, like Craig said, is full a lot of the time of the year, so we're really excited to be able to bring on this new position, someone that's concentrating on the selling of our facility, first time in 47 years that we've had that position. When it comes to revenue, we look at our rates constantly. Actually, our rental rates for our facility increase 3% per year. That is our standard. That helps us to keep up with our escalating operating expenses. Likewise, for 2026, there's an increase in our budget when it comes to equipment rental. We rent chairs and tables and tablecloths and production equipment and cameras and lights. So we've taken a real close look at our equipment rates to make sure that we're in line with others. That is going to be an increase that you're going to see in the budget for 2026 on the revenue side. Likewise, food and beverage. We joke, but we're serious. Food and beverage floats our boat, floats our budget. That is our major category, along, of course, with the BBB being very imperative to us. So you will notice that when you come to a Civic Center event, a Monument event, you won't see a lot of 50 cent hot dogs, you won't see a lot of dollar beer, because that food and beverage line item is truly what helps float our budget and float our boat. So one of our goals for 2026 is to really optimize that of those event-by-event offerings and optimize our specialized offerings. We've seen a lot of success in offering premium products at the Monument, and so that is something that we're going to continue to do. We, like everyone else, have challenges and opportunities as well. Staff stabilization has been a challenge for us. Prior to opening the Summit, we had 52 full-time employees. We will be at 60 in 2026. Craig mentioned one additional budgeted employee in 2026. As a note, 27 of our 60 full-time employees are union employees. We, our part-time staffing is around 600. That is a challenge. That 600 number includes about 400 part-time employees plus about 200 community group members, which we'll talk about here in a second. But that is a real challenge, trying to keep a maintain a steady pool of quality part-time employees. So we've had to do a lot of thinking outside the box. I want to give a lot of a big thank you to the city HR department and the city attorney's office. We've been investigating the J1 program opportunities for a few years now. We were able to get that implemented this last busy season, had about 10 J1 employees come and help us. This year, we're going to be up to 25. That's a huge help because of that, you know, instability and our local maintenance of part-time positions. We are always hiring when it comes to part-time. Community groups, I mentioned that. Community groups, this is a real win-win for the community as well as our facility. Again, thinking outside the box, we have a lot of softball teams and South Dakota School of Mines groups and Ellsworth Air Force Base groups and church groups that come together and will fulfill roles for us in our concession stands. And in exchange for fulfilling roles in our concession stands and selling product, they get a percentage of the sales. In 2024, that was over $215,000 was paid out to local groups as for that opportunity. Again, a thinking out of the box and a great opportunity. We see that continuing to escalate, and we're getting more and more demand for that. Again, one of the big things we're working on is efficiencies. Now that we're four years into the Summit Arena, we are really striving to become more efficient. For us, that means more training, more utilization of our existing systems, maximizing things. One of the things we're excited about is our software for our menu boards. We've learned about the psychology of sales and really trying to maximize some of those opportunities, so again, we can maximize our revenue and our returns. Likewise, being efficient with our time and using our booking software to help us with communications and invoicing and all of those things. Inventory control, waste control, those are important things to us as well. As an enterprise fund, we have a commitment to the community to really maintain and take care of our facility. Crazy to think that the majority of the facility is going to be 50 years old in two years. 2027 is not very far away. So 50 years old, it's a big ask to take care of a facility of that size, but we believe, and our board does as well, that we're responsible for that entire operation, its annual operating budget, as well as all the capital maintenance that comes along with a facility of our size. Now, and as a note, and I think you know this, but we don't participate in the CIP program at all. So one of our things is our Board of Directors. Greg was involved in this as well, heard lots of discussions about it. We worked hard to develop a long-term capital maintenance plan. That's what I handed out to you all, just a little bit of go. So this was our goal, was to create a plan, a long-term plan, subject to change, subject to adjustment, that really showed our plan long-term as to how we plan to take care of the asset. Now, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. We've tried to prioritize those things. We know those adjustments will continue to come over time. Out of our operating budget, we dedicate a million dollars a year to the capital maintenance plan. It's far short of where it needs to be, but it's a long ways from the half a million dollars that we were at for years and years and years. How we've decided to do that is we take our million dollars in capital and we segregate it out between structural projects and equipment projects, and we keep about 10% as well for emergency reserve. There's always surprises, equipment surprises are never inexpensive. So again, about a half million dollars a year dedicated to structural projects, as you look through the packet that I handed out, you can see a long list of all of those types of projects and kind of the priority that we've placed on those over the years. About $400,000 a year to equipment, and again, that $100,000 a year to our emergency reserve. Along those lines as well, we have, we have some debt service at the at the Civic Center. Just in 2008, when the ICE Arena was constructed and opened, our Board of Directors took on a $5 million bond to finish some of the items, build a parking lot, purchase some equipment. That bond will mature in 2028, so we've got a few more years of making that debt service payment. In 2021, when the Summit Arena opened, the center hung and the ribbon board did not fit into the $130 million project. So again, our board made the decision to seek a loan from the city for 10 years for that project. We make about $121,000 a year payment that will mature in 2031. We are happy to be have an additional five-year contract extension with the Rush. That's very exciting for us. We also know that the ICE Arena was opened in 2008, and here we are, 18 years later, and there's a lot of upgrades that need to happen in the ICE Arena. So along with that contract extension from the Rush, we are working on a multitude of projects in the this year and next year. Those things include that large end scoreboard beyond its useful life, the ribbon board, dashers, there's much more safe dasher systems now. We're doing LED lighting conversion. Our big, huge lights in the ICE Arena actually have shutters because it takes 15, 20 minutes for the lights to warm up, so we're actually eliminating those and going to an LED lighting system that will also enhance the experience for the patrons that attend those events, telescopics, HVACs, the list goes on and on and on. And and the good news is that we have amazing talent within our own team, within our own operations department and our engineering department. They're able to take on some pieces and portions of some of these projects to help us try and reduce the cost. As we're looking at the ICE Arena project that needs to be completed right now, it's about a $4.2 million project. We don't have $4.2 million, but our board and our team are discussing what our options are. That include taking some money out of some of the reserves that we've been able to build up, taking some money out of that, but we're probably going to be seeking a loan for the balance of that project here in the next year or so. We've visited with Daniel about some opportunities, we're just examining our options right now. We're into the study phase and the study process as to see how those things will turn out. So an example of continued commitment that we have to our facility, when the Summit Arena opened in late 2021, and through the years up until through last year and into this year, we have done well in the Summit Arena. Annually, we have budgeted up until this year about a half million dollars a year in capital improvements. Every extra penny that we generate beyond our expenses goes right back into the capital improvement plan, the plan that you see in front of you. We want to try and do those projects even more aggressively than we have them planned for. We had a great last four years. We were able to invest $4.5 million into ourselves, if you will. And a majority of that $4.5 million went into things like roofs. But we didn't have the money to completely rip and replace the roofs that needed to be ripped and replaced. Our operations and engineering team went to work and considered all the options that were out there. Through an RFP process, we discovered an opportunity to coat the roofs and extend the warranty on those roofs by 20 years. So we used a lot of those funds to be able to address the roofing situations that we had for a majority of our roofs within our facility overall. So that was a good thing, we didn't fill the landfill with old roofing material. We were able to have a sustainable project and be able to fund that with operations revenue that we had generated beyond our budgeted means, again, turning every extra penny right back into the building itself. I want to talk quickly and a little bit about our overall revenues. As I mentioned at the beginning, we generate about, our projected budget is $19.1 million in revenue. Just to give you some perspective, our total revenues in 2021, which was the last year before the summit was opened, were $12.8 million. We're projecting 19.1 this coming year. So a nice growth trajectory, as Craig mentioned, we know that's not sustainable forever and ever, but but we are on a nice trajectory. So our projected growth from 2025 budget to 2026 budget is 4.9%. Where is those growth, is that growth coming from? Food and beverage, I already mentioned some of those things, really concentrating on our offerings there, adding variety. When you come into the Monument next, you're going to see some coffee and espresso kiosks in a permanent and portable locations, so we're excited about those types of things. Those are always things that we're looking at. I mentioned in our, when it comes to our rentals, that we have a standard 3% increase in our room rates and facilities that we rent, and of course, our equipment that we've been evaluating as well. Our corporate sales department continues to work to sell additional sponsorships and build our relationships with our local sponsors and offer those premium seating offerings that we have within the building. Craig talked about the BBB tax, it's important to us for sure. The 6.5 million that you're seeing there on the screen is a gross amount. You'll also see an expense line item for 25% of that that flows through to Visit Rapid City. We're a major contributor to that tax as well, along with obviously our local hotels, restaurants, and bars, tourism-driven tax for sure. As Craig mentioned, we work really closely with Visit Rapid City to promote the city as a whole, and of course, our facility as well. Quick look at our expenses. Again, like Craig said, as our revenues rise, so do our expenses. More events means more staff, more food and beverage to purchase to sell, more utility usage, but all of that also translates to more economic impact, and we know that is a major reason for our existence, is to bring economic impact to our community. So our major categories of expenses, you can see there, our overall salaries and wages are about 45% of our total expense budget. We're actually, from budget 2025 to budget 2026, that's increasing less than 2% overall because we have so much demand in some of our community groups. We actually reduced some of our part-time wages and in our food and beverage wages budget and offset that with an increase in professional services to be able to accommodate those local groups, which is, like I said, that's a win-win for both of us. Merchandise for resale, we have to buy it to sell it, and that's a challenge for us. You know, we buy food in large volumes, we buy beverage in large volumes, and there are no, not a lot of local opportunities to buy on the massive level that we have to buy. So that is a real challenge for us to try and purchase as wisely and efficiently and effectively as possible. You can see the Visit Rapid City, 1.6 million. Again, that's that 25% that flows through to Visit Rapid City. I mentioned the professional services with our groups. Everyone knows that all of all of our local services, including elevator, escalator services, HVAC controls, all those costs continue to rise. Utility-wise, as money allows, we're converting as many lights to LED as we could possibly can within our budgets, adding VFDs where it makes sense, trying to control those electrical and energy expenses as best as possible. And again, you can see the rest of the list there. Overall, our expenses are up almost in relation to our revenues. They go side by side. We're constantly working that any extra revenues, like I said, get directed right to that long-term capital maintenance plan so that we can derive those improvements to the facility. As we improve the facility, we know that it furthers our commitment to the community, improves the asset, and in doing so, brings even more events to town. People walk into our building and say, there is no way this building is 50 years old. It does not look like it's 50 years old. So it's awesome to have those types of folks come into the building and see and bring additional events to our community, because events is what we do. Events creates economic impact. If anybody's looking for a tattoo, we have a national tattoo. If anybody's looking for a tattoo, we have a national tattoo convention going on over at the, in the Barnett Field House over the weekend. So now's your chance. It's very interesting to walk through. I think that drives it. Events is economic impact, and Craig's going to take it from here.
Just a few comments to wrap up, and I do, I was reminded of a story. I often say this to Daniel. The number of events that we're doing there right now, I would, I'd love to compare that to Madison Square Garden. I would love to. Now, why do we do what we do? We book for events for three main reasons. One, we've already shown you, we've got to drive our bottom line, we've got to float, help float our boat. Two, we still need to be a civic center. We're the monument, we still need to be a civic center. We need to fill that civic need in the community. We do a tremendous amount of community events, non-for-profit events, public school events, a lot of those are, are at a thirty percent discount at the monument. On top of that, other civic things that help out, that help out in the community, The Rush, that's a for-profit organization, they help our bottom line a lot, but I also think they feel that community need of pride, having your own team in town. They've been here for a number of years. I think they're a great example of, of what, something helping out the community. But the third thing, and probably the most important thing, and Tracy hit upon it a lot, is the economic impact that, that we drive. We had an economic impact study in, that was done of the year two, twenty twenty-two. And I'm going to assure you, on a very conservative level, I made sure it was conservative because I felt I was going to have to defend that economic study to council, to the city, to the public. I wanted to make sure that I was able to defend every number and there was no fluff in that. On a very conservative level, that economic impact was driving a hundred and thirty-one million a year. The previous economic impact was done in two thousand and thirteen, the year before I got here, and we had doubled it in that time. And I would like to see an economic impact study done, probably in the next few years again, so we can see where the growth is since the last one. We're having tremendous internal growth. We want to see how that affects and affected the economic impact. And with that, I'm going to leave it up for questions, for me or Tracy.
Thank you, Craig and Tracy. Great presentation. Kevin, you have a few questions or comments?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. I was curious, I didn't see the bonds for the Summit Arena. Is that because it's paid by the Vision Fund?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Then the only other thing I wanted to say was, thank you, but if you haven't seen the Elvis, you know, you started out with Elvis Presley as our first grand opening concert. If you haven't seen the video of, of that concert, CBS News did a special news segment and actually filmed Elvis coming into the Civic Center. You'll recognize the building, and then when he went on stage, and then when he left, and it was just pretty amazing. That video, there's a clip out on the internet, social media, I have it on Facebook, it's cool to watch, and I just want to, you know, unfortunately Elvis died two weeks later, so. It's pretty cool to watch that. If you haven't seen it, go watch it.
If you don't mind me responding to that, I have seen that video many, many times over, and it's really the only full concert of Elvis Presley anywhere. It was used in the movie of Elvis Presley at the end during the credits. I think a lot of you know that. A lot of you probably don't know, is we have a lot of Elvis aficionados that travel the country and come in and ask for a tour of that building because it's the only building that still exists in the form that it was when Elvis was there, right down to the color of the paint on the wall and everything. I don't know if that's a good thing, but.
It's new paint.
Yeah, we've repainted it the same color, so they can actually walk in and go, oh, Elvis touched the wall here, and all that kind of stuff. So we've seen that video many, many times.
Bill Evans.
I just want to thank you guys for all you've done over the years, you know, working with the school groups that I did and so many zillions of things we use that building for and seeing it evolve. It's been really great to see it grow and everything else. I'm hoping that in the future, the city does a little bit better job of perhaps supporting that half billion dollar facility over there because I've preached many times how, in terms of zoning and the way we've allowed support facilities adjacent to it, say, along Omaha Street, we haven't done a very good job of that. At one point, we had six restaurants lining Omaha Street that would help feed your people during their breaks. Now there are none, you know, and I don't know if the people, the businessmen in Rapid City were even aware that that impacts, and you know, a dentist's office or a law office or whatever those facilities have become over the last few years, they don't help us market that facility. I think the new hotel's going to be a big asset and perhaps another hotel's going online in the near future, but we need to be better in assisting you guys in the ability to market this nationally and even to the point of working with the airlines and everything else. It seemed it was easier to get to Rapid City many times back in nineteen eighty-nine than it is now in terms of air travel. And so maybe we can co-opt and build some new relationships that haven't existed before to make sure that you guys are able to mark that facility to the point it should be marketed because I think it's capable of doing even better if we can allow people the chance to use it. So, thank you.
Greg, your comments?
Waiting for the green light. There we go. Thank you, Chair. And thanks, Kevin, for bringing that up about the Elvis footage. You know what? Lance, Lindsay, Kelly and I weren't even born when that happened. Oh, wait, that was high school, never mind. But for the last few years, I've had the privilege to be the liaison to the monument, and I've become familiar with how the team works and how the board works. It's fascinating to me to see how well this facility is managed and operated and marketed. I think if you were listening to what Tracy was saying, she keeps coming back to words like efficiencies, every extra penny, strategies, and I see that happen in the way that they operate. I guarantee you that every purchase that's made there, whether it's a light bulb or a piece of equipment, they get the very best value that they can get. I'm not saying it's always the cheapest, but it's always the best value because they negotiate, they research, they spend their money wisely. It's such a massive building complex, and so much happens there behind the scenes that people don't know, you know? What does it take to transform that into a rodeo grounds for the Black Hills Stock Show or stay, you know, work twenty-four hours a day for three or four days to convert it back into an arena or get it ready for a monster truck show? There's a massive amount of behind-the-scenes work that happens there, and they manage all of that stuff. They have to find the labor for that. I just think they do a great job, and so I just want to congratulate them on what they do. And I know that their expenses are going to rise, that's, and it rises with the revenue, but it also rises with economic conditions that are outside their control. Everything costs more and everybody charges more for things, and so I just congratulate you guys for doing a great job of running that facility. It's a, it's a real pillar for our community. Thank you.
Kelly?
Thank you. I wish this was a presentation that the entire community had to watch. I think that we had someone come a couple weeks ago and say that the monument was a boondoggle, which I have heard boondoggle in the past month on council more than I have in my entire life. They've said it. And that's when, when Greg and I were growing up, that's not something us young people say, right, Greg? So, so I know, I think you have some misconceptions with the community that I just want to say we recognize and appreciate the work you do and really looking forward to you booking Taylor Swift's nice concert, so, thank you.
Just a couple of comments I would have. I drove by the, the monument, I don't know, a couple of months ago, I called Craig, I said, what is going on down there? I mean, every street was packed with cars. I mean, way up past that old grade school or jail, whatever that was, people were lining the streets, and it was some sports event that was kind of local. So us locals didn't know anything about it, and I sat down and talked to Craig, and I'm often asked in my business, you know, the Civic Center's never busy, they never have any concerts, but so much of what they do, we aren't part of. Didn't you have a gymnastics thing here recently? A thousand people a day were there?
A national event, yes.
We don't know that. It's great, but I just wish, you know, somehow we could educate our community of all the good things you do. And two questions. Tracy, you mentioned J-one employees. What, what's a J-one employee?
Thank you for the question. So a J-one employee is a cultural exchange employee. So the J-one employees that we had this past busy season were from Argentina. So they work with the government, they have their visas, we work with a couple of different organizations, but they're here on a cultural exchange. So they worked their tails off while they, while they were here, and we made sure that they got to Mount Rushmore and got through Custer State Park and that sort of a thing.
They're all college students.
Yes.
And probably this question will be for you, Craig. You know, there's, in the works this new field house, how will that affect your operations? Will you lose some, some events? Will you gain events? How, how will that affect?
Yeah, you asked a question I, I thought might come up today, so prepare for that. I, I want you to know that we are in favor of that complex. Right now, indoor facilities largely is us. So during my busy season, that season, I'm telling you, I have no more room, we're doing a lot of things. Some of the tournaments that we're doing are large audience tournaments that belong at our venue, but some, some of the tournaments, they're good for economic impact, they're good to have in Rapid City, but they don't need a big arena as part of their tournament. To have a facility that houses that stuff will move out of our, our space and into their space, and then we have the space to book other things and, and grow what we're doing. Years ago, even, even when we first built the summit, it was COVID, right? We were hungry for any event, and we took every event that we possibly could get a hold of. Now, that's flipped, but we've created relationship, those events have built up, they have nowhere else to go. This is going to be good because we're going to be able to do events at that place, and we're going to be able to do different events and bring in different things to the monument. So we're in favor of that.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, one question for you guys. In terms of scale, how does this facility stack up with Fargo, Billings, Lincoln? I mean, this is a, eight hundred thousand square feet is pretty big. I think the mall is like seven hundred and eighty thousand square feet or something like that. But where do we stack up in terms of that? Who's as big as we are? Are we the biggest one outside the big cities?
I would say in our total business, we are bigger than any of those that you mentioned. Even Sioux Falls fits in that, where they have a complex like we do, but they don't use it in the same way we do it. Our complex is in full use, they're looking at building a new convention center because they're from a venture center can't hold, that attract the kind of events that they can do. They don't use their old facility, their old arena in the level that we use our old arena, plus we have the theater there and all that. So all those places you're talking about, overall, we do more business. Now, the larger markets like Sioux Falls, they get a few more concerts a year than we do. You know, they get a few more of, they do really well with some D-one basketball tournaments and that kind of a thing, but we're, we're angling for the business that we are going to be able to do well. When you talk about concerts, we hear that a lot. We've actually increased the number of concerts. Not only that, there was a slide, there's a slide up there right now that's showing you concerts at the bottom there that we would have never gotten if we didn't book the, or build the Summit Arena. So we have increased, and not only that, we've increased in the size of concerts, but our market is limited, being the size that it is, so there's only so much that you're going to be able to do there. And then just to kind of tackle the other question of, why do people think that there's no events going down there, going on down there? I blame it on marketing. It's the difference in marketing from in the nineties than it is today, right? In the nineties, I was a pro at marketing in this business in the nineties. You put out some radio ads and you get on the ten o'clock news on TV, and you put a ladder ad in the newspaper that says, these are events at the, at the Civic Center this week. That's not how it's done anymore. Marketing is very, very targeted. It's almost entirely done on internet and social media and those kinds of things, and it's very targeted for demographics. So if you're not in the target, you probably don't know that we're having an event that, at the monument at that time. Before Tracy mentioned it, how many of you knew, knew we were having a tattoo festival over at the monument this weekend? However, he has spent a lot of money and had great marketing on social media and internet, and we're kind of expecting to get some good crowds for that this weekend.
Thank you again, Tracy and Craig. How about we take five minutes for a bathroom break and cigarette break or whatever we got to do?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Just as a reminder, the police department put in all of our boxes a get out of jail free pass for all of us. The Civic Center gave us all season tickets for the rest of the year. So Vicki, I don't know what you're going to offer us, but it better be pretty good. Okay, Vicki, the floor is yours.
Bear with me a second. It's got a few seconds to warm up. Stand by.
Something up here.
I'll just share with you that I'll text Anna to not give you guys parking citations because you've overstayed your time in the parking lot. Is that a good deal?
I'm pretty in the round because I thought of my tail.
See, not that I want this televised anyway, but thank you guys for enduring with me yesterday through that migraine. It let go of me about 3:00 AM, and then my alarm went off at 6:00, and I've been a little leery to eat today. So I thought instead of falling on the floor over here, I'd just go ahead and sit down. Plus, when Daniel goes to make the other half of the presentation, I got to make sure I have my own mic, so. Oh, lordy. Yeah, let me just use the full voice. So Daniel and I are splitting up our presentations tonight. As you know, we've been the interim director of Public Works, and this in part shows you exactly how that split is. There are 352.25 FTE positions in the Public Works Department. In addition to what you see on my side of the ledger, the one that isn't being shown is the position that's held by Shannon Truex, and she is our Administration Operations Manager. That's our call center, public outreach, and she also provides administration for the trenching board. So that should be on there, too. I'm going to do this side of the ledger, and then when I'm done, Daniel will do his side, and then we'll stand for questions, if that's okay with you. So when we look at the engineering overview, including adding Shannon into that, we can add on five more employees to that total FTE count. And these are the divisions that it covers. Our design development, construction, traffic, stormwater, that's our MS4 program, GIS, and then administration is what Shannon does. In addition to collaborating closely with other city departments, this is a constant communication between DOT, the Corps of Engineers, FEMA, Danner, and so many outside agencies, the consultants in this community, the developers in the community. They become our friends over time. We meet with them constantly. We had, just today, I was in six meetings. There's some exciting projects coming forward. There are days that we sit, and it's like, I can't believe I get paid to do this. It's sitting up front in the pilot seat, watching what's landing in Rapid City. I do want to say, it has been a privilege to have the opportunity to get to know the staff in Public Works. I've been here a long time. I've seen what they do from the outside, but I've never got to sit down at the table to see what they do from the inside. I'm telling you, this is a high-quality group of individuals, and it is exciting to see the work ethic, the dedication, and the pride they take in being a city employee. So while I am excited that the position will be filled, hopefully in the near future, it's bittersweet. I'm attached to this group, and it's going to be hard to let that go. One of those divisions is known as the Design Group. That is Michelle Lashley leading this group. They are the ones that are putting forward a lot of our CIP projects in '25 right now, in-house design projects. We have 15 of those valued at about $5,000 that have been awarded, and six, five million awarded, thank you, and six projects that are valued at about $3 million, and those are in design. Those that are being actually constructed, these are in addition by city crews. We have four project site designs that have been completed. That's about $200,000 estimate. And then project sites in design is about $150,000. The consultant-designed projects, we have five projects out at $16 million awarded and six projects that are in design for $32,000. The bid is anticipated still in 2025. Our 2025 estimated project bid total, 33 projects at $56 million. And of course, that's an estimated construction because a lot of those are still in design. In '26, you'll notice that there's 32 projects being identified. That dollar amount has been brought down, and in part, that is because the CIP budget has been reduced for '26. The engineering and design, as you can see, spend about half of their time in total working on CIP projects, management, and design. There's about 25% of that time that's working on engineering programs. And things that you don't probably realize is that when someone is coming in and they're wanting to determine what type of water is needed in an area, they have to model that, whether it be water or wastewater. They're constantly looking at bridge maintenance programs, construction fees, pavement condition index, street reconstruction and rehabilitation planning. That's all a part of what, and I won't go through the whole list, you can look at that, but it's an extensive part of what they do. Engineering criteria and policies, that's a lesser amount at about 11%. We have standard specifications in our IDCM, our Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual. Those have to be updated regularly as industry standards change. We need to make those changes as well. And then we're also drafting other standards that we see need to come forward. And this might be a good opportunity to share with you that one of the things that we started in our engineering team is something mirrored off of what we do in planning, which is coffee with engineers. We had one very successful meeting where we brought in the public, those consultants, those developers, and we talked about issues that are specific to them. You sometimes hear people come into city council chambers and say, "I'm frustrated with this criteria. I don't like it." And we're going to start doing that more and more. We're going to try to have one for every season, so that would be four a year. That's what we do in community development as well. We want to sit them at the table, understand what's working for them, what's not working for them, where we need to preserve the integrity of the regulations so that we are ensuring that we're not putting future cost on taxpayers because they got to lighten the burden of their growth pace for growth. But at the end of the day, we want to ensure that where we can, we are making adjustments as needed. And then our engineering support, and this is something, the one that just jumps out at me, and I don't know that all of us realize this, but if you look at even the one that says fire flow analysis, anytime there's a building permit that's going up beside single-family or townhomes, there has to be a fire flow analysis. Do we have capacity in this area to meet fire flow? And so this is the team that does all of that. A lot of construction staking goes out, accessibility design. Anything in the right-of-way falls under the purview of this division, and we are constantly looking at where we need to meet that ADA improvement. Within the development group, there are five FTEs, three engineers, and two agents. We are down two engineers. This is managed by Todd Pekos. Todd should be in here with the cape on. He is handling a workload that, for all the years I've worked here, has taken three engineers to do. His work ethic is unmatched. And every time you see a shovel of dirt getting turned that goes to community development, whether it be a plat or a building permit, Todd singularly is reviewing these. And he's hitting his deadlines, and he's getting them out the door, and he's doing a stellar job. We have those two openings. They're hard positions to fill. This is the easy target position. This is the one that if something isn't going right, or you don't like the timeline that it's taken, this is the one that gets criticized the most when you have a developer or a consultant come up to the podium. It's typically this group that's getting criticized. So we're working on incentivizing this division and maybe doing some role changing where maybe you get on the hamster wheel, it's a two-week turnaround, and then after so many months, you get off and you go into design, and we bring in another engineer to relieve those just for sustainability. That's what we had to do in planning. Current planning is the same way. It's far more fun to be in long-range planning, but it can be very difficult in current planning. They also have the administration of right-of-way permits, so we have a right-of-way agent. And they also handle all erosion and sediment control issues, so we do have an agent that works on that. Sidewalk assessments, you'll see all of the design exceptions that are brought forward when appealed to city council. Again, that goes through this division as well. Our engineering construction team, it's a total of 13 FTEs in this area. It is managed by Jordan Adkins. I call it the inspection crew. If there's work getting done in the right-of-way, these guys are out there. And there's only 13 of them. They have to inspect all CIP projects. Right now, we're looking at 23 that we're working on with 22 development projects. Commercial permits, there are 17. We anticipate that, as we do every year, there will be an increase from year to year. Sometimes we'll get criticized that, how did we accept a street and a residential development that falls in disrepair inside or outside of that two-year warranty? These inspectors are hitting all of these sites daily to the best of their ability, but they can't stay on-site. The integrity of those contractors, they have a contractor's license. When we inspect and say, yes, that design looks good, it's on them to maintain that design, and then we go off to another site to do those inspections. Engineering, this is a one FTE position. Right now, it's being held down by Justin Huntley. This is our stormwater and our MS4 program. That's our municipal separate storm sewer system program. This is required by the EPA. It's on the right hand of the screen. It is required that we put out an educational and outreach component to the public to address stormwater systems. There's a management program that must be in place. Construction site stormwater runoff that has to be controlled. Pollution prevention that needs to be maintained by that. In addition, this is where our floodplain management comes from. We get audited X number of years by FEMA. Anything that happens within the floodplain, or if there's any portion of a property that has a little bit of it in the 100-year federally designated floodplain, requires a floodplain development permit. And we don't miss those. We require it. And we get audited for it, and we typically get a very high rating, and we need that because your flood insurance that every homeowner applies for is determined by that audit rating. So this is, again, very important. It's right now managed by just one person, but it is something that we take very seriously, and I'm proud to say we do get typically very high audits from FEMA. Our 26 projects, we're going to do an in-house study to the city's storm sewer map, an in-house study for our storm sewer model creation. We're looking at a master plan to blend all of this together. We're going to update our stormwater quality manual, last updated in 2009. Update our stormwater manual program that was last updated in 2017. Update the city facility stormwater pollution provision plan, again, not until 2013. And then make informational handouts. Those that we can put on our website, handout at the public. This has long been coming. This position's been open for a while. Justin has jumped in, and he's all hands on deck and very eager to take on these tasks. Traffic. Matt Lehman leads this group. Stellar group. I can't say enough about the outreach that Matt gives other departments. In parking enforcement, we oftentimes come across situations where we don't know how to address some complaints or business owners' requests in the downtown area. We do what we call a walkabout. Anna Gilligan and I grab Roger and Matt. I can have sat and thought about it for a week, 30 seconds, and Matt says, "Do this, do that, change that striping, sign it." Problem solved. So he's extremely valuable to what we do outside of just this department. As a part of what that group maintains is 124 signalized intersection. 55 of those are DOT intersections, and 69 are city intersections. There are many times throughout the year you may get complaints about a city street. It's surprising how many times those are actually state right-of-way and not city right-of-way. In addition, they're maintaining 180 beacons. This is what you see at the school zone, those crosswalks, and other beacons that monitor movement in that right-of-way. Locate services. They're responsible for locating and mapping approximately 2 million linear feet of traffic infrastructure, and approximately 4,200 locates per year. That averages 17 tickets per day. And when you call 811, who are you going to call for utility locate? It ain't Ghostbusters. It's Matt Lehman. And Matt's team has to go out with every one of those 811 calls, and we've got to locate our utilities as well because, of course, we've got a lot of traffic and other electrical components within that right-of-way. Streetlights, 3246 on city-owned, 2477 on power company-owned. And you're going to see later on in the presentation, Matt has been replacing a lot of our streetlights with LED lighting. Huge energy savings for the city. Again, our efforts to look at efficiency and where we're spending our expenditures. Pavement marking and design, I have to give a shout out to Matt. Our parking stalls downtown, while they're managed by parking enforcement, we don't have the staff or ability to put in the striping, so Matt does that for us. Also, all of the symbols, those would be like, as an example, the ADA symbols that are needed. 740 crosswalks, 1.5 million linear feet of long line striping, 25,000 feet of yellow curb. That's a lot of striping for the city. GIS Division, Angie Talon is our leader in this area. They have an FTE of five. And remember that this is both a city and county department-supported facility. 24/7 support for dispatch, emergency management, fire department and police department, along with the sheriff's department. They do overnight updates so not to impact the GIS system. It is a dedicated staff working some very strange hours. They maintain 60-plus web mapping applications, 350 data layers. And each and every day, it seems like we're going to Angie saying, "Can we get another layer on? Can we get another layer on?" And trying to make that all work and still have proficiency in access to the public and to the government in the layers that we have access to. There is GIS software uploaded on 133 computers. They have to provide support for that. Nine servers, data update, and again, that goes to some of the parcel layers that we're talking about. We are making more and more of those available to the public. Hats off to the GIS Division for working with us to get water and sewer distribution lines available to the public. They're no longer just city-viewed. They can be viewed by the public. And by the way, huge, huge positive feedback from the community that they can now see that. And then they provide training. They go out to the county. If there is a business in town that says, "You know what? We would benefit from Rapid Map training." We send a team out, and they sit down with that agency, and they train. Rapid transit system. Rapid transit system. Megan Gould is the manager of this. 33.75 total FTEs. She currently has three vacancies. We've got two fixed routes with, excuse me, six routes, but they're two legs for 12 different laps within the city. That includes both dial-a-ride and rapid ride. Dial-a-ride is ADA compliant and we manage two facilities as well. That is the depot and the bus barn. 34 buses, four support vehicles. This fleet is aging. Megan took us out to a repair company that does most of our bus repairs, had it raised up so we could look at the underside and the corrosive damage that is happening. Because again, like you heard from Chief Hedrick, these vehicles don't stop. They're on the road constantly. They're making those laps. They're hitting those marks. And we've got some significant damage and the cost of these are very, very extreme. We're going to be looking at five replacement buses. Four are in such disrepair that we're going to dispose of them. And while I'm not going to say we're going to surplus them, we might hold some in reserve because those bus parts are expensive. And if we can piece those out, again, it goes to efficiency. We're trying to be more efficient with how we spend those dollars. 2024 total ridership, because we're still in '25, we went back to '24. 254,305, 31,167 of those trips being a part of the youth ride-free program. We're seeing a 14.6% increase in our '25 ridership and a significant increase in our youth ridership. It's becoming the thing for youths to do and we love that. Less young drivers on the road. Let them use our bus system. Make that the cool thing to do. 484,540 total revenue miles in 2024. Our funding primarily is through a grant fund. That's the 5307 grant fund that pays up to 50% of the funding needed for RTS. This year, it's almost 1.7 million. While we have been concerned about grant reductions as we've been seeing dogged grant dollars being affected, we do anticipate in 2026 that we will secure that grant again because again, it is providing transportation for those in our community that otherwise do not have the ability to get from point A to point B. And we anticipate that to be 1.7 or slightly above. Out of general funds, we're at our 42% fund and then revenue pays for 7%. DOT then matches that grant fund from the 5307 at 1%. Stewardship. This is LaSanne Seller. And I call this our sustainability department. She's a one-person wonder. She has worked diligently with so many areas of the city. Right now, she's housed in Public Works and she's reached out to many of the divisions within that department. This department was created in 2013. Councilman Evans, you may recall, you went to bat to ensure that the city stood up this position and it's reaped great benefits as a result of it. Sustainable growth and development, water, solid waste, transportation, and a huge education and outreach program. She is now administering the EPA Climate Control Pollution Reduction Grant. She's a liaison to the Sustainability Committee. She's helping to track energy tracking, to manage energy tracking software. She's assisting with many other grants and rebate programs. And then of course, she supports the B-City USA and Pollinator Friendly Efforts. And that is such a great program and it really unites the community. You know, sometimes government can seem so hard and cold and regulatory and we pause and take a moment to realize that these environmental concerns do matter. And she's the face of that and is doing an absolutely excellent job in performing these duties. And it's become a cost savings to the city. You're going to see that later on. When we look at our overall budget, and I do have to explain that streets and maintenance is in this and Daniel, the only way we could break down the budget numbers was to include that. So bear in mind when we're looking at it. The 2025 salary budget is at 14 million and some odd dollars. It's slightly more than that. In part, that is because of the 27 pay periods, but also there are four new FTE positions within the maintenance team and a fleet manager. And overall, that's still a very small rise compared to what it would have been if we would have had additional FTEs within any of those divisions that I've just gone through. Our professional services, these in large part are increased because of those interdepartmental charges. Rentals are down. We anticipated in '25, it takes such lead time to get so much delivered that we anticipated that. So what we're going to need in '26 is already being delivered in '25. So there is a significant reduction in that going into '26. Repairs and supplies and materials, there is a slight increase in that. But remember, this is where we're doing centralized services. Again, instead of everyone going out and hiring their own mechanic, we're doing centralized repair. And so we do see a slight increase in that. But however, that's also a part of this budget. And so there is an increase that kind of absorbs that as well. Training and education, those costs seem to always go up. We have significant vacancies in this area, within this department. And we need to be able to bring people in and keep them trained. There's a lot of certification and credit hours that have to be maintained in order for these licenses to be updated. And so that's money that's well-spent. And it also serves as incentive when we're trying to hire young professionals. They need to know that we are going to pay for that so that it's not an out-of-pocket expense for them. Our utilities have gone down and this again, is in large part because of the LED lighting that Matt Lehman and his team has brought forward and all of the energy efficiency efforts that the stewardship program, LaSanne Seller has brought forward to those areas of Public Works. As we see her transitioning to other departments over the years, we anticipate you'll see other departments bragging on the kinds of things that she can do to save money in this area as well. Overall, the budget is going to be from 20,000, almost 21 million to almost 25 million. This includes all of our areas that I identified, plus as I said, the streets and maintenance. When we take out those additional fees for interdepartmental and we look at that one additional pay raise, it's overall an increase of 2.2%. So we really tried to hold it as tight as we could. One of the things that we have done as well in order to check that efficiency box, we've partnered well with the School of Mines. When we can hire these young engineers, engineers in training, we can do so at a much lesser salary. We can help them learn their trade. And many times, as they move into that professional PE position, they're solid employees nestled with the city. But again, we've gotten to take advantage of that lesser salary with those duties that maybe don't require that full PE and transition them up into solid full-time engineers with the Public Works Department. I think I have one more slide for you. The grants that we have listed, the EPA grant, we're concerned. We are very concerned whether or not that one's going to be impacted by federal cuts. Vision Funding, that is the video management system. We feel solid for it that we're going to have the funding in place for '26. We feel good about the 5307 grant and the DOT match. Our state grants are our ARPA and our Bridge Improvement Program Grant that is state. We feel good about those. The FTE bus procurement, again, not as much concerned. The Scenic Byway, that's a grant that we don't know for sure if it's even going to be feasible. But we've got it on the books. It's something that would be important to the Scenic Byway of Skyline. And we're going to keep working forward to secure that going into '26. Studies performed in-house, traffic impact studies, ongoing traffic counts. That's something we do constantly. Flood map updating and then infrastructure availability studies. There are areas of our community that don't have growth, that are struggling with growth because of lack of infrastructure. We can perform those studies. We can bring cost estimates forward. We can see how we need to partner with developers that are interested in areas. So that's a crucial part of what we're going to be doing in-house. Collaboration with consultants is our Transit Feasibility Study. The Skyline Drive Rehab Study, Annual Bridge Structural Evaluation. And in part, we have to outsource that because of the expertise needed in evaluation of our bridge design. And Chapel Lane Bridge is an example of where we need those outside services. Pavement Condition Index Study, our annual sanitary sewer. This is where we go in and actually telescope all of that, along with our annual water system survey. In collaboration with the county, we'll be doing a drainage basin design for the Enin subdivision. Reimbursement, GIS funds from Pennington County. Because we do stand up their program as well, we do receive funding from them. Our DOT reimbursement, which we've talked about in some part. We have a joint powers agreement and programs that's existing. RTS, we've already talked about that funding with the state and the grants. Pending EPA grant reimbursement, very concerned on that one. FEMA, if there's an emergency, we know that those dollars will come in. Our franchise agreements, this is a big one. You know, all those utilities that go out there every day and they're doing work in a right-of-way, they don't pay a right-of-way permit. They go in, they do that work. And so we enter into a franchise agreement and they pay us a lump sum. And until I sat down in this interim position, I had no idea the dollar amount that is. But again, that gets them that get out of jail free. They can do all the work that they need to do for a course of that calendar year. And that's needed revenue for what we need to do in the city to perform all of our duties. All of that list of software, that's currently onboard. So some of our expenditures in those other categories that you saw on the previous page will stand up that software program. We are hopeful that when we bring Tyler onboard with our e-submitting program, and again, so many departments were a part of vetting that, maybe there is some combining of some of these software programs that the city currently purchases where we can downsize that number and use more universal software to do more and more of our needs. I'll turn this over to Daniel now and then we'll allow questions at the end of his presentation.
Standby.
Sure. Thank you, Vicki. Thank you, Rod. Should have a joke. Should have a joke right now.
You're on.
I should have prepared, I know.
What are you going to wait for? I'm waiting parking tickets.
Wait. Yeah, your water bill.
Water bill. You heard it.
Eric, close your ears. All right. The other half of Public Works. This is our mission statement, working together to grow, maintain and protect our community through reliable service and sustainable infrastructure. And that really is a goal. Over 300 members of our Public Works Department, they have gone through a significant year of a lot of changes. I think the entire team as a whole is trying to be far more innovative in how we're providing those services to the taxpayers and definitely looking at changing a lot of our processes to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible and that we're returning as good of a return in value to the taxpayers as is possible. Our Solid Waste Division, that has 70 FTEs. It includes collections for residential customers, including the remote sites. I don't think people realize the amount of effort that goes into collecting the recycling and the yard waste that happens at those remote sites and then also cleaning up the remote sites so that they can be used for parking, for events, and then re-establishing those remote sites. That is a tremendous activity that's completed on a weekly basis. And our landfill operations, we are one of four regional landfills in the West River. The other three being Balfour, Edmond and Lemon. It's a significant deal for the quality of life for all of western South Dakota. Our recycling MRF, MRF, in case you don't know, that's Materials Recovery Facility. One of the important things for that facility, and this will come up more as we start talking about solid waste in September and October, is that the facility is actually designed for, I think, three or four times the amount of recycling that gets processed through there. And so if we could increase the flow of recyclable materials into there, our costs of actually processing would just marginally increase. That's a significant area that we would have for cost savings because of course, any materials that end up being recycled do not wind up in the landfill, which it costs a lot of money to dig those large holes in the ground for landfill space. Our inflationary increases, along with capital projects, have meant it's now operating in the red. Our Solid Waste Division is operating in the red. And out of any divisions within the city, our Solid Waste Division really was hit by far the highest, or by far the hardest with the inflationary increases that ended up occurring, especially in equipment. Our garbage trucks increased by 30 and 40% in a very, very short period of time. And then also throughout the Black Hills region, you ended up seeing it was a premium to hire anyone with a CDL. And we lost, I think it was about three and a half years ago, we were losing almost all of our solid waste drivers. And so we had to make a significant change in their salary in order for us to be able to retain anyone because we are not competing with the significant amount of construction activity that was occurring in the Black Hills. That has not translated to the rate structure. And so in September and October, we are going to have a new proposed rate structure that will be presented to the council. And just want to be fully transparent that the '26 budget that we're looking at is based on the current rate structure. And just to be, again, fully transparent, in order for us to implement that, we are not able to do any capital improvement projects for 2026. For us to stay compliant with our regulations, we can't proceed with that. So even though we're presenting the budget to you right now, the reality is in September and October, we're presenting three different options for the council because you'll need to make a decision at that point. So our capital improvement program, you may kind of wonder what that actually includes. In the very, very near future, we have to move our yardway site to the south property. That would allow us to construct an additional cell for future growth. We need to move that within two to three years. That's a very expensive project. In addition, we do need a new outbound scale. Our current scale is 20 years old and it is very difficult to find parts. That's becoming of critical importance for us. In addition, we have a significant need for another inbound scale. We have a large bottleneck that happens if you ever try to go to the landfill Saturday mornings, especially if it's sunny, you might want to rethink that choice. The reality is, is that there just is not enough capacity at that entrance point because of the scales. And so that's an improvement project that really is necessary. In addition to reduce that choke point, we are looking at moving the 24/7 yard waste facility further south. Again, that would cost money, but that also would avoid a lot of the interactions that end up occurring at that choke point. And as I said before, the MRF facility is 30 years old. There does need to be major upgrades. 30 years may not seem like it's that old, but the reality is that the recyclable materials that they're continually using have a lot of corrosion that ends up occurring to the equipment. A lot of the equipment no longer can be replaced. We can't find parts to it. And so there needs to be significant upgrades there. Also, our co-compost building, we're looking at making some upgrades in there so that we can get our equipment parked inside that building as well as new totes that we have. And also our litter fence netting needs to be replaced and several posts need to be repaired. To let you know, we complete a lot of free services within solid waste. And anyone who's operated a business knows, if you do a lot of free services, it's challenging to continue to pay for your operations. it's challenging to continue to pay for your operations. So far this year, we have waived over $130,000. That's an actual hard cost of $100,000. So if we were to charge our normal rate for it, we'd actually net $30,000. Not only did we not net that, it actually cost us $100,000 to complete that. Those were free services that were provided to a lot of city departments. And it was done to help out those various different divisions. But there's a cost to it and that cost is ultimately borne by that division. In 2024, the total cost was almost $74,000. In addition to that, there was $63,000 that was spent on the hard cost for our citywide cleanup. Our utility bill free dumps, this is something that we'll be asking you guys to talk about in September and October. That, those are fees that we did not receive. If we would have actually collected that, that would be over $900,000. And then last year, our household hazardous waste event, that had an actual hard cost of $79,000. In addition, our remote sites, the cost for fuel and labor. And the accountant in me, I guess, says that excludes equipment. So that's not really all the cost because the equipment, of course, has eventually has to be replaced. But just looking at the exact cost for there at Fitzgerald, that's 682 grand. Silver Street, 605,000. Another very significant free service that we provide is our yard waste. The curbside collection, over 790 tons. Again, in September and October, when we provide some information to you, you'll see how challenging that actually is and inefficient that is for us to complete that service. The remote drop offs, you can see all the yard waste that we end up collecting at the landfill. All of that is for free. We did just change that this month, I think Jeff, is when it went into effect for commercial entities, that we started to charge them a very minimal fee for dropping off yard waste at the landfill. And the reason for that, they were coming in with large trees that take a lot of time to be able to compost and to grind up. And we have started to charge a very nominal fee for that. Because before, all of the yard waste costs were really just being borne by residential customers. The next division, our fleet maintenance. The fleet maintenance is responsible for almost $56 million in equipment. They have a total of 25 FTEs. That includes the additional two FTEs that we are requesting in the 26 budget. They operate mainly out of the main facility campus. That's close to the school of mines. Just to note, the main shop there was built in 1952, even earlier than Elvis performing at the Civic Center. In fact, it probably needed to be replaced by the time Elvis performed. And then the second shop was built in 1981. They are undersized. I think one of the most disturbing things you can see for our city employees is to see when it's snowing outside and you end up seeing our mechanics working outside a shop, hauling tools outside a shop to work on the equipment because the equipment does not fit in the shop. If you want to talk about efficiencies or being able to retain employees, that's, that really is not how our employees should have to work. And it is not a good return for our taxpayers. We have made some improvements at the facilities. Those improvements were funded through a grant that our grants division paid for or received. And so we have had some new doors, I think, that were installed there and some other things. In addition, we do have some satellite facilities for fleet maintenance located at the landfill as well as at Parks Canyon Lake Facility. That's a fantastic facility there, very crowded, but it's a great facility. At the landfill, that facility also, we are not able to fit most of the equipment in there. So it's nice that we have a building, but a lot of the equipment does not fit into our shop building. Facility needs, again, we are going to be presenting this to you, I think, at the next Legal and Finance and Public Works Building, or I'm sorry, Public Works Committee meeting next week. A needs assessment that we have completed for it. The reality is, our, our facility fleet maintenance facility program needs to have a modern facility. And there's a lot of additional benefits that we will end up having as a community from that for efficiencies, for our ability to actually maintain our equipment in a better manner. If we actually had a facility, we could do that in. Our water enterprise is composed or comprised of 63 and a half FTEs. The production, they treat and distribute almost 3.6 billion gallons of water annually. Although this summer, with how much rain we have, we probably won't hit that mark. But nevertheless, it's an awful lot of water that we end up providing to the residents of Rapid City. Jackson Springs and Mountain View Water Treatment Plants are the majority of the water comes from, but we also are supplemented with nine wells. Distribution, we have 19 different pressure zones. From someone that spent a lot of time in cities in California, I was blown away to see that. The complexity that is required to have so many different pressurized zones is incredibly complex. There's approximately 500 miles of water mains that run throughout our community. And also something that I'm sure many of the council members have started to see, that you notice in our community, of course, the freeze thaw cycle and the depth of the freezing that occurs in our soils means quite often during extreme weather events, we end up having breaks in those mains. And so quite often, as everyone is enjoying Christmas dinner or New Year's Eve or something like that, we end up having a repair crew out trenching eight, 10, 15 feet deep in frozen soils to replace water mains. And so that is a continual issue that we have. Although I think when you look at our water loss, we do very well compared to other communities. We do a very good job of maintaining our mains. But the reality with our topography as well as our climate here, we do have breaks. And so that requires a very dedicated crew that gets called in in the middle of the night oftentimes to make those repairs. Also, water oversees our utility billing. We have more than 26,000 accounts. They bill for water, water rec as well as solid waste services. Significant initiatives that you'll be seeing over the next 12 months in water includes our lead service line inventory and also our replacement plan. That's something that's being driven by the federal government. So there's a lot of steps that are going through that. That is taking a tremendous amount of Eric's time to prepare that plan. But you will start seeing more and more decision points where we are going to be bringing action items to the council and we will be asking for your policy direction as to how we should be proceeding. Another issue that we've started to look at over the past eight, nine months has been our fire hydrant testing and response. That is, of course, a significant issue for our ISO ratings as well as just for peace of mind and quality of life within the community. In order to do continual testing of that or routine testing of the fire hydrants, there would need to be some changes in our workforce. And so as we complete that modeling, we'll be presenting it to the council for some policy direction on that. In addition, we have nearly completed a revamping of our water meters so that there's a lot of additional remote capabilities of our water meters. Some really exciting features that once we complete replacing those meters, we are going to do a lot of public outreach so that individuals can actually see what their exact water usage is at the moment. So that when people are concerned if there's any leaks or anything like that, they'll be able, be able to actually see that. Again, we have several more months worth of work to do, but that is coming. In addition, something I explained when I was here for finance was our billing enhancements for payments. That's something that should be coming online here in a couple of months. Rehabilitation of well number four, your next council meeting, there are some items on that as well as drilling of wells numbers 13 and 14. And then lastly, one of the largest infrastructure projects the city is going to do, that's going to be the site selection of our east side water treatment facility. That's been a study that we have been completing in-house. We should be able to bring that to you next year for your consideration. And I think also another point that's important for the council to be aware is that the water does provide free water for a lot of city facilities. Most notably, of course, is our parks and recreational facilities. The cost of that's $2.3 million. Our water reclamation enterprise, that's 56.8 FTEs. Collections of 350 plus miles of lines that go across our entire community. That requires a lot of additional maintenance work, including jetting, as well as looking at all of the various manholes that go throughout the community. I think over 7,000 manholes in our community. That's a lot of additional effort. You can see communities that do not take the time to do that maintenance and it works for about four or five years. And then eventually, if you're living at the end of the line for the community, you'll end up getting a lot of calls from people with concerns in their basements. Thankfully, we do a lot of preventative care and so we do not have a lot of those issues in our town. Treatment, we treat 3.2 billion gallons of water last year. If you want to see the difference between what we pumped and what we treated there, that's pretty much what goes on landscaping in the summer months, other than this year. And also significantly this year is our continued construction of the water reclamation facility. That is the largest infrastructure project in our community's history. And also this division oversees stormwater. They collect and convey stormwater through constructed as well as natural pathways to reduce impacts of flooding as well as to reduce erosion and to try to have a far cleaner natural creek throughout our community. That is federally mandated. We do reduce pollutants and also sediment and also sediment infiltration into creeks. And so that's a lot of times when, you know, neighbors have concerns about that easement that runs through the back of their property and they say, you know, we want to make sure that we have a shed there or, or we want to mow the grass there and we don't want to have, you know, the cattails that go through there. The reality is, we're supposed to have the cattails through that. We're supposed to have the higher amounts of grass because that's what helps filter the sediment so that by the time the water reaches a cold water fisheries, it's clean and it's not actually killing the, the fish and other aquatic wildlife that's in there. The significant initiatives, of course, is the continued construction of the water treatment facility. That's supposed to be completed in 2028. And of course, you're going to continue have, to have a lot of items that are going to be coming before you over the next 24 months in relation to that. But I am happy to note that the project is on schedule and also within budget. Also, I do want to note that the current adopted rate schedule is sufficient for us to continue our services for the CIP and equipment within wastewater. And also, we have been able to hire a new superintendent. Dave is going to be retiring next March, is that right? So after decades of very dedicated service for our community, he's going to hang up his hat. But we have a very capable replacement Jeremy who's going to be taking over. And we have some good crossover time to make sure that there's some good kind of crossover training so that Jeremy doesn't come in right as Dave exits. One item I do want to bring up is this picture here, stormwater. That is something that's going to be brought up to the council in the coming months. We do need additional funding for our stormwater enterprise. Our fees that are collected are insufficient for us to continue to do the capital projects that are necessary, especially as our community continues to grow. Streets maintenance, we have 40 FTEs in streets. They maintain 3,000 lane miles, about 2,000 lane miles of that. Or two thirds is going to be for asphalt. The remaining third is made up of concrete or gravel. Roads, that includes sweeping, something that they spend a lot of time doing. That's also part of our federal requirements or regulations. We had two sweeps, sweeps months this year for the first time. We started to do that in May and every single lane mile in the community was swept in May, I believe, two or three times during that month. And then we continued to sweep throughout the summer. And then we'll be doing that effort again in October, I believe, after the leaves have fallen. That, of course, is important for us to maintain a clean community, but also it helps in our, our air quality as well as in our pollution prevention and sediment control. Pothole patching, this is an interesting tidbit for everyone to know. We've used more concrete and asphalt by July as all of 2024. That crew is incredibly busy. They have done a fantastic job in increasing their overall efficiency and the amount of work product that they're doing in our community. That's for potholes, that's also for parking lots. If anyone goes to Sioux Park, I think it's a tremendous job that that crew has done. But in addition to that, they're doing all sorts of small projects throughout our community. We have special projects, that's a new initiative that they started this year. So it was something that most of the times when we had small odd jobs, we would end up hiring an outside contractor to do. Because they were small, the, the price point was incredibly high. Our staff instead has taken those on. That is include repairs at our parking ramp. Two different canine kennels that were done for PD at their, at the officers' homes for their canine units. The PD's new impound lot engineering has put in several different requests for small projects that we've been able to complete. City Hall ramp, Parks parking lots. So a lot of projects that we're starting to do in-house now. Significant initiatives that are, that are coming up include a, we have completed a reorganization of streets. That division did not have very much depth of leadership. Now, under Jesse's leadership, we do have some additional supervisors as well as some crew leads. That's provided us additional accountability. And I think when you start looking at the amount of projects that they've completed, that has been a tremendous success for the taxpayers. In addition, we have new software for our equipment. That also is providing a lot of additional accountability for our employees. And also it alerts us to any accidents that might happen as well as some road conditions as we are plowing snow. Additionally, we have, we made some enhancements for winter road maintenance. We had a new GIS mapping that we were able to partner with the GIS division to do. Individuals were able to actually track responses throughout the winter and see how many times that their road had been plowed. That was very convenient when people said, you know, no plow has actually been in front of our house. And we were able to say, actually, at 9:42, one was there. And also at 1:58, one was there and one is going to be there in about 20 minutes. That's been a fantastic tool and it actually was very, it was used a lot by residents as well to see. Upcoming, there's going to be a request for a new machine right there that should help us as we're doing a lot of additional roadwork. And also, I should be pointing out, the presentation that we're going to be making, also in addition to our maintenance facility, we're looking at asking the council to support having a covered facility where we're able to park the equipment in a covered area. That's something that people don't think about, but when you're asking for a more responsive or a quicker response for winter storm events, when we have to dig out the equipment first. And after we dig it out, we have to start warming it up. It, of course, delays the response as well as costs a lot in labor as well as fuel. And so having a covered facility where equipment can stay inside will speed our response as well as extend the life expectancy of that equipment. Facilities maintenance, we have 10 FTEs in there. That includes two FTEs that we are asking to be, we are asking to be funded in this budget. Those FTEs are going to be funded through reduced overtime for operators as well as some outside contractors. Because right now, on a lot of our facilities, they are being cleaned by operators on overtime. That, when you look at the cost of that, that's not the most financially efficient way to perform that. perform that, as well as when we are looking at the costs we have for several of our outside contractors, we're able to perform that more affordably in-house. They maintain several city facilities, city hall, two police precincts, fire station one, water production facilities, wastewater facilities, as well as a library. They'll do, or they do routine cleaning as well as just general maintenance, painting lights, different things like that. Vicky?
You gotta say the end.
Oh, the end. Well, it's Friday at 6:00, so.
Thank you very much, Vicky and Daniel. I learned a lot. Didn't know you guys did so much. Any questions or comments? I have a list, but I'll just email you separately, Daniel. We'll be here till 10 o'clock tonight. Any questions or comments? Greg?
Thank you, Chair. Daniel, we've been talking about this fleet maintenance facility for quite a while. Is that something that would be combined with the covered facility for some of the equipment, or is this going to be two separate structures?
We are, we are looking at the same site. They would be separate structures, but it would be the same site, yes. Because there would be different materials. You just need to cover equipment versus actually having a maintenance facility.
Right. And the guys that work in the maintenance facility, obviously very valuable part of the community and the services that we can provide. And I know they're good at what they do, and a lot of our operations depend upon those Would, would you foresee that they would be able to design this maintenance facility because they know what they need to do their job that they do so well? Or are we going to have to have some architect spend millions of dollars to try to design something that those guys know what they need? And I don't know if they could actually construct it too, or if we have people that could do that?
I, in regards to the construction, I think that would be over and above what we'd be able to construct. With that being said, we are looking at some of the demolition and some of the site prep work. That is stuff that we could do. And so that, I think, we would be more than happy to do because, again, we can do it more affordably for the taxpayers. As far as the design work, I know, no matter who designs it, we want to ensure that the mechanics are deeply involved because, like you said, they know what they need. They've been doing it for a long time. But I...
Let me add something too. Because of the size of this structure, it will have to be designed by an architect. It'll be required by the building code. So while there's those structural integrities that have got to be stamped by that architect, I think going more to what your statement is, I think there would be hands-on, how do we form the inside of it? What, where does the operation work and not work? Having that team know what they need and being a part of that is going to create efficiency so that we don't have to redo something later on if we were trying to retrofit an existing building.
Yeah, I think they, they would be the most knowledgeable about what they need, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Kelly?
I'll just make a quick comment that I think the general public wouldn't know if city council went missing for a couple of weeks. I think they couldn't care less, but I think if you guys didn't show up, it would take a couple hours at most. So very appreciative of what you do and thanks for the presentation today.
Bill?
I just want to say that with this restructuring slapdown, fresh on everybody's mind and watching you guys work together and everything, we're in a position now to have some dialogue so that the restructuring that needs to take place over the next few months can still happen. I do believe some of that needs to take place. For instance, I've never really understood why, you know, the bus department is under public works and things like that. Some of these don't make sense to me. I don't understand why something like sustainability, which should generate ideas that would impact everybody in terms of cost savings, is at the bottom of the list rather than at the top. And so I think we need to have dialogue continuing over the next month. Well, this is all fresh in people's minds as to what we need to do to make it work. And any input we can come, that comes from you guys, feel free to send it. If you think something works or doesn't work, we need to know about this. Obviously, having one public works director that was overseeing all of this stuff evidently was too much for one man. I've gone back in the history and looked and saw why it was formed, and it, it's a logical progression, but I think as we've gotten bigger, maybe it's worn out. So now's the time to start generating these concepts of how we want to run going forward. So that's all I wanted to say. Oh, and I'm really, I got to tell you, when I see you guys go out, it's 20 below, I think our water department does an incredible job of suffering through these emergencies and fixing the things. We have a very odd terrain in this city, and the response is always very quick. And I want to congratulate them for that because we've relied on them. They're really kind of unspoken heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Daniel, and thank you, Vicky, for your presentations. Our public works department is incredible, very complex, many different divisions within this group. A lot of needs. I'm hearing there's a lot of needs, a lot going to be happening in the future. I just wanted to say thank you to our city employees who are dedicated to this division and go out and work for us every single day and keep our basic city services operating. Our water and sewer are critical. Nobody's going to know, like Kelly said, if we go missing, but if your water's not working or your sewer's not flushing, that's a major problem. So there's some challenges. I have a lot of thoughts, and I can email you questions, Daniel. I was excited to see about the new mixer patch machine. Is that going to help us with the pothole patching?
Yes.
And the labor-intensive process that that entails? I know there's a lot of efficiencies that can be made, and it sounds like you guys are really diving into how we can be innovative, how we can reduce the duplications and just be more efficient as a, as a city. So thank you very much for your services, or for your service and efforts. And thank you for, both of you for filling in and that interim role too. So I know that's been a lot, and we appreciate it.
Bill, this concludes our budget hearings. Go home and have a good dinner.